And the state, I thank all the Board of Education members for being here tonight and for being here remotely. Sorry, there'll be feedback.
Can we have a roll call?
Sure, can you not see everybody? Alright, so Mr. Seeny is here, Mrs. McCammon, can you say here?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Burke?
Here.
Mr. Denis?
Here.
Mrs. Ritchie?
Present.
And Mrs. Stein?
Here.
So, all members are present tonight. I thank the public for bearing with us.
Mr. Maroney?
Present.
Mr. Maroney, I'm sorry, Mr. Maroney, present.
Present.
I thank the public for bearing with us, but this meeting is closed to the public. We hope you can view us on streaming live, and we will also have this meeting recorded after. And in the interest of time and everyone's health, I will hand it over to Dr. Adley.
So, good evening, everybody. Thank you for available yourselves, a short notice to members of the public who are looking in. Thank you. We very much appreciate your participation. And if I may say, we had quite a few participants and communication over this past weekend in particular, and we very much appreciate those. I think we've got most of them, if not all, into the Board of Education, and we'll continue to certainly work through those.
Very hard to hear.
It's hard to hear? Is that any better?
Yeah.
Is that better?
That's better, thank you.
And certainly we'll continue to work through those for personal responses, but thank you for those. So, we're here this evening to talk about the waiver, and I want to share just sort of like perspectives on why originally I as an administrator, as your superintendent, didn't think that we should support or could support. I wanted to support the waiver. So, the waiver came through on March 9th. I want to recognize, look, there's a lot of things that have been said that are correct or incorrect. Let me share a couple of things with you. For our staff, our staff has done tremendous work. They are ready, willing, and able. There's nothing about the infrastructure, there's nothing about the talent, there's nothing about the state of readiness that doesn't make us ready for e-learning. In fact, we ruled out today with general, I thought, very favorable feedback, so our e-learning platform and maintenance activities, enrichment activities for the students that were very well received. But we didn't go forward, we had a couple of issues going on. One, the State Department was vacillating back and forward. That doesn't really make much of a difference, other than they've taken different positions on should you do e-learning or should you not do e-learning. Originally, they were for e-learning, then when the waiver came on March 9th, they were recommending, as the State Department and as a commissioner, not to do e-learning, primarily because of issues of equity. Our staff was preparing two scenarios the whole way along, right? A full-blown, what's the difference? Well, the difference is primarily, some of the experiences would be synchronous in the sense that people would be there either live, or you could hear them, or a combination of those things, or they would be remote. So, that's the main differences, and once you get the waiver, then that would qualify those for days, right? So, without those days right now, we're going to school June 30th. Things have changed a wee bit, and this is changing by the day, as you can imagine, even as of no later than today, actually. So, making that, honestly, I had to sign off on it first, which in essence meant I had to bring to the Board of Education a recommendation from me, right? That I could support that, and honestly, I couldn't support it with the information. And the reason I couldn't support it primarily was it was issues of equity. You have to attest that you will abide by all state and federal regulations. This district, since I've been here, I knew it beforehand, I've observed it since day one here, and it's been a calling card, I think, off the district. You make decisions and recommendations based on meeting the needs of all our students. I couldn't honestly say that we could meet the needs of all of our students, and perhaps our most challenging students, and all of the delivery of special services. That was one of the, that was, that was actually the main reason, this main reason we felt we couldn't do that, and it's also the main reason that the State Board of Education did not recommend that districts to go down that route. They were just giving you, your sign-off essentially was taking all the liability, that's really all that was. Plans themselves are not submitted to the State Department of Education. There's a general request that comes from the superintendent of schools, and also the board chair is representing the board, and you're testing, you're taking all that responsibility. So, why would I come back now and talk about it, other than maybe I received a hundred of emails, right? No, but that is important, right? I mean, of course, that's important contextually, you want people involved, but things have changed even over the weekend. So, in consultation with the commissioner directly, and in consultation with council, there's a few things that have changed. One, it is very clear that we are not planning for 10 days anymore. The governor's recent actions just attest to that, but honestly, most people think we're going to be out even longer than that. So, this is not a short period of time that we are looking to solve, and in which case, the recommendations from the State Department and the federal law, I think it's more reasonable to expect us to do something and not be perfect, and to give it our very best effort to meet the needs of our kids, knowing that we will fall short in some capacity. But it's probably more acceptable and more reasonable, given the amount of time that we are going to be out, which is going to be significant. I would suggest you maybe be further than the 31st of this month, but that remains to be seen, that if we can do something, given our best effort, and listen, we'll do more than our best effort. This district and our teachers go the extra mile, easily, right? They are busting at the champ, right? Actually, to get more involved. So, that's the reason I bring a recommendation, but I do bring the recommendation with that understanding. Just being honest, I did not want to put the district in a position where, after the fact, we will be dealing with a lot of very, very complex issues, expensive issues, complex issues, and more importantly, equity issues. So, I'm actually glad to have this meeting, so that collectively, we can take a direction to go knowing the direction that we are going. I'm happy enough to support that and recommend that, because I feel as if that's, that should be a reasonable position. We're going to be out of school a long time, we can't have kids, childrens, not being serviced, and if we fall short because we're seeking excellence, well, we'll certainly give it our best and one of our best efforts. So, I'll bring before you this evening the recommendation that we go ahead and make that waiver. The waiver can be submitted this evening. It is a very quick turnaround time. I also have a few connections, so I can certainly make a phone call, but it can be turned around pretty quickly, I would expect it to be turned around pretty quickly. So, the board may have questions of clarification programmatically or otherwise.
Yes, so, all the emails I received, all the input I received from the public up until, you know, right before this meeting, has been sent to board members. I hope, I know we've all been reading, and I do think, as it should be said, how hard our administrators have been working, I have been nothing but impressed that they were committed to doing the right things, and on the phone with the state all weekend, making sure Darian did the right things by kids, and equally, the public should know that's watching, I have been impressed by our board, who has answered every phone call, read as much as they can, and is willing, in this precarious time, to participate and make decisions. So, I will open it up first with gratitude and thanks to you guys, but I will open it up to questions, if you'd like. Mr. Seeny?
Thanks to the chair as well during this time, and your hard work. Maybe if you could just delve into the state and its change in position a little more, and why it pivoted so quickly from basically Wednesday to the weekend?
I'm just going to be a bit of feedback. I actually spoke with the commissioner twice over the weekend, and he was actually talking about the potential of closing schools. So, this particular thing over the week, he didn't pivot, well, he pivoted over the weekend because we decided, the state decided to close all the schools, so now they have no option. Like, if I close all the schools, now you're going to say, don't service all the children and all the schools, bless you. So, I think it was like a forced decision, in terms of, since the schools are closed, it's an unacceptable decision to say that we're not going to do anything. So, he's forced to make that decision. I actually think, honestly, if I was a betting man, I would guess that maybe tomorrow you might not need a waiver, but I'm not taking that chance.
Mr. Burke?
Thanks to our chair, thanks to my colleagues, thanks to the administration for your incredible hard work. From reading the emails, and I'm sure this will be the case going forward, I think it's of critical importance that once this plan is in place, that it is clearly and abundantly communicated to our population with clear guidelines of what the expectations will be of the parent community and of the particular students. I think this community, they'll do whatever is required, they just need to know exactly what needs to be done.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Thank you all to everyone. Very quickly, a number of the emails asked about the April vacation and scheduling there. I didn't know if you had a recommendation at this time to add some certainty to that question.
So, the days that we have to make up right now that go to the end of June are soon, and that we're not making up the days right now. I would motion just to hold off on that temporarily, because things are changing by the minute. I think I'm just getting an email here passed along to me, though, a change in circumstance also. I would say for now, to perhaps just hold on that decision, but we may have to circle back quickly or not.
Thank you.
Mrs. McCammon?
Can I just follow up on that? I appreciate that we, well, maybe you want to read the email first?
No, I shouldn't do that, sorry.
You can share that with me, Dr. Silver, do you see what it says?
Sure.
Just tell me what it says.
I'm from the State Department of Education, dated March 16th. Dear colleagues, due to changes in CDC guidelines, in which they suggest that there may be a long-term cancellation of classes, and U.S. Department of Education guidance regarding districts' efforts to provide continuity of education, we are planning to reduce your reporting requirements and eliminate individual district applications for the 180-day waiver. Now, we may all focus our efforts on providing students in Connecticut with continuing educational opportunities to the greatest extent possible. The State Department of Ed guidance this morning identifies risks as partners that will have resources, exemplars, and materials for districts to access. We will also provide additional resources tomorrow. As a result, districts should engage immediately in providing continuity of educational opportunities for students, and may end the school year at their regularly scheduled end date.
Could you read that last sentence, please?
So, let's just say that sometimes the devil are in the details, so we will read the email and make sure we understand fully the implications.
As a result, districts should engage immediately in providing continuity of educational opportunities for students, and may end the school year at their regularly scheduled end date.
I would interpret that to mean that the days that we're doing right now, it's nearly, the decision nearly has been made for us here, but anyway, we continue to provide remote access to learning, those days would count, and therefore, you would have an April break and you'd move on.
Mrs. McCammon, is that a follow-up?
No, it's different.
Oh, go ahead.
So, what does that mean in terms of timeline? Does that mean tomorrow morning, everybody wakes up and we're ready to go?
So, what I would say is because the staff has been ready, right, but our announcement to close was rather abrupt, right, given last Wednesday's developments. So, I would say that what we would do for Wednesday is the teacher-
Tuesday?
Well, Tuesday, yeah, but I think in terms of communication with people and so on, I think on Wednesday, we would have the teachers join what we have right now, and work in communication with parents, and in some cases with students. So, the teachers would potentially, I would say potentially, because I have to, I have to complete some circles, but they would work their normal workday with their breaks, their normal lunch break and so on, and they would be available Wednesday to Friday. It would be our anticipation to transition into a more sort of synchronous activities starting on Monday, and we would communicate that accordingly.
Okay, Mr. Brown?
Just one question to that plan, do we have a schedule or a proposed way for students to pick up devices, should they be needed?
Well, we did, we did make that offer, and I know there are some requests that came through this morning, particularly for our primary students.
Yes, so, for students in grades three through five, that process was relatively complete last week. However, we've now reached out to our families for our primary grades, where children may not have devices at home, and we're now working out a plan where they'll pick up those devices at a particular period of time, day and time, as quickly obviously as possible, given the circumstances, so that we're not opening, hopefully, every school and doing that kind of work.
I would just consider that if we have some of the secondary schools where people didn't think that the work was going to be necessary at the time, perhaps did not collect devices, we may want to open a window to that community as well.
For the high school, they were, the school was open, I believe it was Friday, for families, excuse me, Thursday, for families and for students if they hadn't picked up their devices. I have not heard that students didn't have that device or another device at home. We'll circle back if there's any student that doesn't have a device.
Mrs. McCammon?
What is the expectation for ELP during this time?
Of course you may.
ELP will participate, as it's all pre-K through 12, same expectation for all our students who are participating in the program. We don't have the same electronic availability, so Laura's looking to seeing how much time they can spend on a device, how there'll be a balance between some actual activities, what to do, check-ins as well, expecting that they're not going to spend that much time digitally. But there'll be a combination of actual initiatives, different activities, some play activities, and some video time.
Okay.
Or digital time, sorry.
Okay, I'm following, but it's bigger than that, so that's a fair amount of work for any family that might have two spouses working. So, can we talk a little bit about what the kind of expectations are for homes that don't have adult coverage, if that's the right way to phrase it, but for homes that may not have an adult who's able to supervise throughout the day? What are the expectations for supervision, kind of 12, or transitioning down?
Right. I'll just do the first part to that. So, teachers are going to reach out to those families. I mean, the expectation is, of course, with young preschool children age and early childhood, that there's always an adult present. We know it changes when we get to secondary, but there'll be conversations between the teacher and the family of who will that person be, what kind of parent training they might need in order to support that, what availability they have, and how can we design something around their schedule.
So, what I'm hearing, and I just want to, I want to be clear, because there's lots of different pieces to this, what I'm hearing is in terms of public expectation, we are going to roll out an excellent program. It will not mimic exactly a school day with trained professionals in your home teaching, and so, if there are questions or concern, I think it's still appropriate to direct parents to the administration, but to understand that we're in this unique moment, and things are going to feel unique and wonky, but that this plan is solid.
Yes, I would also say that these are uncharted waters for our teachers, and we've had a lot of discussion around technology this season, and I think we will evolve throughout this process as well, and as we learn and grow, our plans may change for students. And so, depending upon how long children are home, that may indicate how different each day looks for students. So, our plan for one given week, or even two weeks at a time, may evolve into something different if we know or anticipate that our students are going to be out, let's say, for another few weeks, or if it's one week or two weeks. So, we do have a structured process and program that we intend on offering all of our students that we believe is developmentally appropriate. Most certainly in our younger years, they will need some adult support. We're hoping that in our intermediate grades, three and up, that parents can foster independence, and we'll set out some guidelines on what will help parents, families throughout that process, but there will need to be some ebb and flow as we learn and grow, as we work through this process.
Okay, so, Mr. Denis?
So, Dr. Adley, could you just repeat again, I think, in terms of some of these questions, kind of what the next couple of days look like? I think that's still where I'm a little unclear. You had mentioned something happening tomorrow, potentially Wednesday, but kind of full-blown, we're in the swing of this come Monday, and I think it's prudent to say the next couple of days will be full of communication and clarity around what's happening. And then, just as a follow-up, I see our IT folks here, is there anything you need from a resource standpoint? I know that might be challenging in terms of people, and getting people to participate or work or come together in specific areas, but is there anything from IT, technology, anything that you need, and you may not know it right this second, but I would ask that you just be as quick as possible in saying, hey, here's what we need to keep this going.
So, first question is that, what's the next couple of days look like? Alright, so, there are some processes that I need to engage in with our union, right, and just to close the loop on a couple of things, because this is, this process has to happen, and then I need to go back, but that's not going to take long. So, tomorrow will be as it was for children, and the parents were helping the kids, and I think that was fairly well received. I will say, by the way, that plan currently, with some slight modifications, would be what potentially some districts might have submitted, because they submitted the waiver, they got it, and it disqualified. So, this idea about what is e-learning, what isn't, is all in the eye of the beholder a little bit. I just want to reiterate and double down, our teachers are ready, our teachers are eager, you've got the expertise, you've got the passion, I want to thank these people across here, it's not a matter of that, right? Maybe we weren't first out to door with it, that doesn't matter as much for me as it does for to do it thoughtfully and comprehensively and in the best interest of the children, and that's the decision was made at the time, but that being said, tomorrow will be a normal day like today, like today was. Wednesday, we fully anticipate the teachers to jump right on board and to facilitate the completion of those activities and maintenance activities, enrichment activities that are on right now, that will take place through Friday, and then we fully anticipate going into a different scenario on Monday. And basically, that will include synchronous activities where potentially, if you have a lesson, a teacher, either in presence or by audio or otherwise, so they'll just be ratcheted up, and there'll be a different schedule for the children, right? There will be potentially, you know, some daily schedules, which will be changed a little bit. Currently, we have activities relatively there now, it'll be accompanied by a schedule. And I really, well, those are the general ideas, but I have to talk those through and make sure we're on the same page just before they're rolled out, but that's kind of what we're getting ready for.
Dr. Adley, may I just add one thing to that in response to a question earlier? Many of our students who have intensive learning needs, with learning differences, those teachers will be reaching out to parents directly to really arrange that. You know, since we can't be in the home applying hand-over-hand intervention and doing that, there'll be a different need in terms of interaction and reciprocal exchange, so they'll be reaching out to parents directly for several reasons. One, to make sure we have the technology in place to do it. Two, to make sure parents have to be in multiple places at one time, if you have children in different environments, to be available, so they'll coordinate that directly with you to make sure that our students can access that instruction. The same for our related service providers, whether they're our service providers in district or out of district, they'll reach out to you directly to arrange that time for, again, for digital exchange and instruction and related services.
May I just, because I think, ask the third question, which is, is there anything we need? I don't think that there's any problem with resources in our district. I think most people know that if you need something, we will find a way to get it if it's in the best interest of the kids. I don't think our director of technology's there, but if there is, or there's something we're missing, we wouldn't be shy about bringing that forward, but I actually appreciate you bringing it up, because if there's something that would help us, maybe tomorrow there is something that comes up that we might need, and we'd bring that to the table, but I appreciate the offer, but at this point, I don't, my colleagues are here, I don't know if there's anything you can think, but I think we're good.
Mr. Maroney?
Just echo my colleagues, thank you for everyone for all the work that has occurred in the last six days and beyond, but I have a follow-up to Duke's question with the technology. You know, I think technology is great on thought, but sometimes it always gets a little wonky. Are we going to have a help desk, a virtue, some way to call in, how to alert people what to do when they have problems? And where will, and my second question with that as well is, where is the best place to get communication? Is it the website? Is it the app? Is it email? Is it call? And I think we should have one designated spot, so everyone knows where to go to get the most up-to-date information.
The best place to go is the e-learning tab, and on there, there's information about if you need tech, help with technology, help with accessing technology, help with the actual content that's up there, so we have an active help desk that's up and running and-
So, Darian Public Schools website, under the e-learning tab?
Under the e-learning tab, which is also, Dennis, our folks can access our children's devices if they're on the Darian PS, using the DarianPS.org. We're able to access their devices remotely, so if a child is saying he or she can't log in, or there's something, a pop-up, or whatever the case may be, even though our folks won't be physically in the site, they do have the ability to access that, which is an important piece. There's obviously a help desk telephone number, that's probably not the best mechanism, given the circumstances, but I would, but we're checking that. Our voicemails go right to our emails, but in addition to that, we have our help desk email. All of it's right on that main page when you go onto e-learning from the district website.
So, if I can, I'm sorry, was that a question? Go ahead.
You can go. Well, in a general way, can you outline what the program will be for our high school students? Not particularizing per class or per credit, but what that's going to look like? You're a high school kid, you don't necessarily have a parent at home, but you're in front of your computer, how are you going to figure out what you're supposed to do and when?
So, my hesitancy is not that we don't know, right? My hesitancy is just I just need to complete some discussions with the union after this meeting, because in fairness, but you will have a tentative schedule, right, some sort of schedule that will be followed, and there'll be synchronous and asynchronous activities associated with that. I think we can fairly say that, which is a combination of real-time and activities being, or sorry, instructional lessons being posted. I think you'll be impressed, honestly, I think you'll be very impressed.
Okay, so, I'm just going to summarize, since we've had so many public emails, kind of where we are, and I think it'll hit most of the questions. There were lots of questions of why we didn't submit a waiver, did we submit a waiver, our waiver was reneged, that is not the case. Darian Public Schools did not submit a waiver because we did not think it was equitable for children. I will say, I'd like to thank our colleagues in Wilton and Weston for advocating, along with Dr. Adley at the state, that for small towns, to take on liabilities like that with no structure and no strong guidance, is a big ask to do for both parents, children, taxpayers, wherever you were as a family, this could have and might have hit you. And so, I think small towns did a really great job through their superintendents of advocating. So, that answers the questions of like, why not a waiver? We now have e-learning that will be in place. Give us a few days, I think if you ask, what I would say, if you asked what we need, is a little bit of patience and please work with us. That does not mean we don't want to hear your thoughts, they're actually very helpful, because it helps us correct and/or redirect course if we need to. And then, the other group of questions I got a lot was around kids in particular needs, if there are particular needs, and it sounds like Mrs. Klein has answered that, and teachers will be reaching out, if anyone is watching on YouTube, if for some reason you have not gotten a call and you feel you need to, they can call in, but there is a plan in place for those students. We will do our best in this uncharted territory, and we ask you to come along with us on this ride for the best interest of students. And Mrs. McCam has a question.
To the point of special education, there was some conversation today, and I think there's been some people acting, organizing to speak to the state about what requirements will be, and asking the state for clarity to support small towns, to your point, but in terms of our parents understanding what their next steps are, yes, there'll be a conversation, are you, do we know, are you looking to do PPT amendments? What structure will you be following to, for people to decide? How are you organizing?
So, our guidance from the state is that we won't be needing to do amendments, that we'll be providing services along with, that the IP currently has. The design may be different, since it's electronic, of how it's distributed, but we're not going to be doing that. We will not be holding PPTs at this time, along with the guidance, and as soon as we're ready to resume them, we'll inform Dr. Adley and the Board of Education and all of our personnel, of course.
Are you expecting that there are any services you won't be able to deliver because it's a contractor, or because it's a type of service that just doesn't work remotely? Or is the expectation that there's a lot of things that are not optimal in this environment, we're going to try it all anyway?
The latter part.
Okay.
I think we're going to try them all. We recognize for- I think we're going to try them all. We recognize for, for prop therapy, you need to have someone there to really use their hands. Feeding and swallowing, we know of limitations if we can't go into the home.
Right.
But we're going to attempt to the best of our ability to provide what we can. We're going to also make sure that we monitor what we can't do. So as soon as we do have access to students again, we'll be able to resume those services.
Okay. Do we have any limitations from contractual staff, or is everybody on board just to follow, because we're following the IEPs the way they are?
Everyone's on board. We actually spoke to most of our providers this weekend. They've actually been willing to post things on our sites. We have all hands on deck, so they're just waiting for, to start working with students again.
Although, Mrs. Klein and Dr. Adley, correct me if I'm wrong, the Public Health Department is not recommending providers go into homes.
No, this is all electronic.
So that kind of, that is under guidance from Public Health, so that is something...
We are trying to be...
I mean, leave in your books to work out, but...
We are trying to be consistent across the board, from the use of the fields to keeping people out of the building so services aren't being provided in the building, services aren't being provided at home. We've done everything from telling people, you can't be tutoring, don't forget, right? You can't be coaching, you can't be doing all that stuff. I want to thank the town too, because they have been working with us hand-in-hand in terms of particularly for free and reduced meals and to make sure that our families receive those. So we're very appreciative of that. You know, in every challenge, there's opportunities. I'll tell you, this district, the blue ray will rise because this district will rise to that challenge, and you'll see the best come out of it. No doubt in my mind about that, none.
Dr. Adley, if I may just add to Mrs. Akwin's comment, the understanding between contracted service providers or in-district providers is that it is all digital, that at this time, consistent with both state and local health authorities, students are made home, and it is related entirely to digital at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Maroney?
Another point I have is, do we have a feedback loop for constructive criticism or criticism of what's working, what's not working, how to have a feedback loop and touch points on how to get that information back to students and parents?
Presently, we have contact information for if you've got concerns about the content or you have concerns about just technology. It may be that, I mean, I can't see us not having some feedbacks if now it appears that we're going to be out for a long time. So I think that's a good suggestion to build something in on a pretty regular basis, whatever regular means, but it just seems like we're going to be out for a long time, and we would probably need that. I think it makes sense from parents, staff members, and students, like, how are we doing, and is there things that we could do differently or otherwise and turn around in a short time period? So we'd look for ways for that.
So I'd encourage all board members to go on that ELEARN tab. I think it'd be good for all of us to be up to date on that tab and what it looks like, but so far, at least the feedback I got was that it was very strong content.
Also, all of our administrators are available throughout the day and obviously far into the evenings, I'm sure. The parents should communicate with their building-level administrator and/or just follow the chain of communication, just like they would if students were here physically. And that way, we can get the communication to whoever it needs to go to, whether it's a department head, a principal, an assistant principal. I would just follow the typical chain of communication.
And my other thought as well is to have a repository or a place to go. Again, again, it's unprecedented times, but if we have some resources to help parents deal with homebound children for extended period of time of what to do, how to manage that, how to help their education, and as much information as we can provide to parents and families, I think would be very beneficial.
Mr. Janine?
I think just to the point of this, from a communication standpoint, just as you go through the communication process, make it clear that all these teachers and providers are all working remotely also, right? It is perfectly clear that there is no one in our schools. So in terms of communication, I think it should be very clear that email is best, or are there specific cell phone numbers that should be called? I think it should be clear who is in the district office here, who is not in, and just how that communication should flow. To Dennis's point, is there some, something or someone or some system that's capturing all of this? Is there a way to post best practices and start kind of a community board that people can go to and feel good about learning someone figured something out in terms of how they're helping their children at home or something like that? I think more communication is better. And then, the only other thing that I thought of, and I did get a question today around this, as anxiety and disappointment build, especially with seniors and all our students in general, but just what does the communication look like with their guidance counselors? We're going to need to do communication about the summer intern, the senior intern program. Questions will come up quickly if they already haven't about graduation and stuff like that. It's just stuff we need to be ahead of, and we need to make sure we're, you know, we're not going to have the answers, but we need to be prepared to accept the questions and figure it out. And state guidance and federal guidance will continue to guide us.
If you happen to have a chance to see Alan Dunn's letter to the high school, I think you would find that the idea of keeping a connection to the children disappointing that they were out, alluding to some of those events and stuff and planning for them, that you make a good point. And I can say through that letter gives you a wee idea, wee window into some of the things that we're trying to do and plan for, but yes, again.
Okay, so to the governors, oh, I'm sorry.
I wanted to ask that just as going forward, if we could discuss the Plumber Day part of it today, but I'd love for the board to be kept apprised of how this is going, you know, what you're looking at, how you're measuring success, how it's going on a semi-regular basis. You know, whether it's, you know, a couple, a day or two in, and then we can figure out what iteration makes sense. But I'd love to know, you know, quantitatively, qualitatively, how do we feel, and a little bit of what are you actually measuring to know. I get that, I get that this is, you know, we're doing our best and this is an emergency situation, but I think this is also an opportunity to learn about things we might do going forward, as we heard from a lot of our parents.
Oh, this is a tremendous opportunity.
So I do think, Dr. Adley and I haven't had a chance to talk, but with the governor's guidance and some relaxation, given the situation still under pretty strict parameters and meeting laws, I think we'll have ways to push information out. I think we were focused on the waiver this weekend, but updates to the board are the next, so that we can be apprised. But it is right there. The waiver just took precedence. So also, oh, the governor's going to kill me for having meetings long. Go ahead.
He can send them my home. The other question that are a request that I have, and one of the things that I'm hearing is, you know, I love the point about communication as things get difficult, particularly for our families that have to deal with more, have the privilege of working through more individualized education plans. If we can think in advance to communicate to families about what communication looks like and what they should expect, I think in some cases that's mandated or defined in the IEP. But I think, you know, again, that's an area where because of the individualized nature of it, the high contact, to the extent that it, I get you're also trying to manage teacher hours, but just the things I'm hearing around the community I wanted to pass on.
May I just respond to that also? And we're in agreement. Teachers are going to begin as early as tomorrow to reach out to families and have those, you know, we know that nothing replaces relationships with children and teachers. We also know with our intensive learners that we can't replicate that digitally, so they'll reach out to families as early as tomorrow to ensure that we find ways to really stay connected.
Okay, so the public's takeaway should be that ELEARN will begin, communications from the district will begin.
Tonight?
Tonight. The board, thank you to the board for representing a lot of the community questions. We will stay on policy. I know, just so you know, in terms of our budget business with other boards, there's also been a relaxation on timelines, so I'll get forward to some of the dates we do and don't have to meet. If there are operational questions, I would remind the public, while we're always happy to be copied, that is the administration. If there are policy questions, that is certainly ours to consider. But I would echo what Dr. DeSova said, please follow the chain of command, because the board is not going to be able to answer your socialized questions. So we are here to be helpful. We are here to pass along information. It looks like there's another email.
No, I just want to make sure that we're doubling down that we don't need the waiver. Just, I'm just double checking before we leave here.
Well, of course, Dr. Adley didn't have the privilege of seeing this in advance, but just so you know, Dr. Adley, I'm sorry, it did come to you, and I got a text from Council saying, could you please show this to Dr. Adley?
I will say this, the language is kind of interesting because it does say, we are planning to reduce your reporting requirements and eliminate individual district applications for 180-day waivers.
So why don't we do this? Let's take a vote to approve the waiver. At least we have that approval. Should I need to sign it at midnight tonight? I will. If I don't need to, I won't. But may I have a motion to approve the superintendent of schools and the Darian Board of Education chairman to sign a waiver to the state, should it be necessary?
Show move.
Mr. Maroney and Mr. Janine, all in favor. That is unanimous. Katie and Deb as well.
Hi.
Thank you for that preemptive permission, and I will certainly keep you up to date, and we will read these emails and be able to fully digest them and do that. So may I have a motion to adjourn. Mr. Burke and Mr. Janine, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Thank you, everybody. Stay well.